Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the July sixteenth City Council meeting. Might remind you to silence your phones if you would and and we'll get started. Will you call roll?
Here.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't think we have anybody here to pray, so I'll just ask a blessing on our meeting. Lord, thank you for today and thank you for our time that we can get together and make decisions. I pray that you'll guide and direct the decisions that we make and, Lord, I pray pray that you would give a hedge of protection around all of us and thank you for this time in Jesus's name. Amen. Next slide.
And the fourth proclamation is Summer Learning Week Americans with Disabilities Act. And the regulation.
All right. Lindsay Lance Brenda, are you guys here?
Brenda, yes, I'm one of his family.
All right, well, join me at the podium.
I'd like to follow which is the first you guys come out of bed.
Okay, how are you?
I'm good. I'm good.
How are you? Good to know you. Proclamation, high-quality summer learning and enrichment opportunities are more important than ever in two thousand twenty-four. The summer months provide a great opportunity to help all kids bounce back, catch up, and propel forward into the next school year. Whereas, Summer Learning Week is a time to reflect on the importance of keeping with youth, learning safe and in health and healthy every summer, ensuring that they return to school in the fall, ready to succeed in the year ahead. Whereas, there's still a role for summer youth employment programs to engage older youth with the support of businesses and community leaders. Our youth can learn, gain real-world experience, contribute to their community and economy, and experience safer environments through summer jobs, interns, and/or volunteering opportunities. And whereas, summer learning programs are proven to maintain and advance students' academic, social, emotional growth, keep children safe and healthy during the summer, and send young people back to school ready to learn. Whereas, Boys and Girls Clubs of Hutchinson, a wide array of public agencies, community-based organizations, including schools, libraries, museums, recreation centers, camps, and businesses in our community, contribute to the well-being of youth throughout the summer programming. And whereas, summer learning is a critical component to our collaborative effort to ensure all students graduate from high school, prepared for college, careers, and life. Now therefore, I Greg Fast, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, do hereby proclaim July fifteenth through the nineteenth as Summer Learning Week. Would anybody like to say a few words?
Lance Patterson. Hiding the wings.
Hi Lance.
Hi.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate this. And you know, these kids, they spend a lot of time during the summers having a lot of fun. But that fun comes with a lot of learning too. And so giving them the chance to do some things that are that are teaching them and learning really helps next year during the school. So I appreciate it from all of you. Do you guys want to say something? This is your chance. What do you want the city to know? No?
No.
They're shy. They're scared.
Did you get the picture you needed?
Can I get one where we're always together? No, you're oddly close to the front though. All right, big smiles. Three, two.
Thanks, guys.
All right, thank you.
Next is a proclamation for the Americans with Disabilities Act. Jonathan Vaughn, is he not here today? Okay. And your name?
I'm Erin.
Whereas, the Americans with Disabilities Act, the ADA, was passed on July twenty-sixth, nineteen ninety, to ensure the civil rights of Americans with disabilities. Whereas, the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, affirms the principles of equality and inclusion for persons with disabilities as set forth in the state of Kansas and is embodied in the ADA. The laws of the state of Kansas and ordinances of the City of Hutchinson and the Hutchinson Human Relations Commission. And whereas, numerous organizations in the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, work with constituents and communities to bring forth the promise of hope and freedom that is envisioned with the passage of the ADA. And whereas, the purpose of Beyond Barriers, formerly Prairie Independent Living Resource Center, is to achieve the full inclusion and acceptance of people with disabilities through education and advocacy. Whereas, July twenty-sixth celebrates the thirty-fourth anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act in the City of Hutchinson, Kansas. Now therefore, I Greg Fast, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, do proclaim July twenty-four as Americans with Disabilities Act Awareness Month. Would you like to speak?
Today, we are honored to accept this proclamation from the city commemorating the thirty-fourth anniversary of the Americans with Disability Act, a landmark landmark legislation that has profoundly impacted the lives of millions across our nation. The ADA stands as a testament to our collective commitment to equality and inclusivity. It ensures that individuals with disabilities have the same rights and opportunities as everyone in our society. The right to work, to learn, to access public services, and to participate fully in community life. This proclamation is not just recognition of past achievements, but a reaffirmation of our ongoing dedication dedication to upholding the principles of the ADA. It serves as a reminder that our work is far from over. We must continue to strive for accessibility in all aspects of life, to break down barriers, to create a world for every where every person regardless of ability can thrive. As we accept this proclamation, let us renew our commitment to advocating for those who face barriers due to disabilities. Let us continue to raise awareness, to educate, and to advocate for policies that promote inclusivity and ensure equal opportunities for all. On behalf of Beyond Barriers, I extend my deepest gratitude to the city for this proclamation. Together, let us celebrate the progress we have made and recommit ourselves to building a future where every individual can live with dignity, respect, and independence. Thank you.
Very good. This is Emancipation Day proclamation. Those that are here for that, please join me at the podium. How are you?
Good.
Whereas, the Emancipation Celebration in Hutchinson is a commemoration of liberation enacted because of the abolition abolition act in August eighteen thirty-four. The Emancipation Celebration has been maintained in Hutchinson for over one hundred and thirty-five years. Whereas, a constant struggle has been going on to accomplish the goals of that proclamation, to bring true freedom to an oppressed people and give life to the possibility that freedom could for all could be achieved. Whereas, in nineteen thirty-six, Emancipation Proclamation Day Celebration Committee, a nonprofit organization, was organized in Hutchinson to arrange proper and fitting activities to honor in honor of emancipation. And whereas, Emancipation Day is a celebration of freedom, recognition of identity, and commitment to solidarity with those in pursuit of life, liberty, and happiness is infringed. Now therefore, I Greg Fast, Vice Mayor, I Greg Fast, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, do hereby proclaim August first as Emancipation Day. Would you like to speak?
Yes. Thank you. I'm just reading what it says.
You're good. Dave Satello, Director of Strategic Growth. Jonathan's not with us today. He's out of the office for a scheduled outing that he had. But happy to receive the proclamation accompanied by my friends from the Emancipation Committee. And I wanted to kind of tie in both of these two proclamations that relate to inclusion. And I think all of us care to feel like we belong in the spaces that we occupy. And we make sure of that through different things like the Emancipation Day Celebration and the ADA. So one relates to the ADA to policy and the other one relates to culture. Two key aspects of inclusion, changing culture and changing policy to ensure that all people feel included in the spaces we occupy. I always think about the ADA as a great example of that because when we are inclusive towards a specific group of people, we become more inclusive towards everyone. And just think of yourself, you know, the ADA requires that we have accessible doors so that if you have some sort of disability, you're able to walk through this door without any barriers. But how many of us take advantage of that aspect when we enter buildings? Whether it's a mother with a stroller, whether it's you that has boxes or something in your hands, you're pushing that button to get into that door. And so now that space is more welcoming towards everyone, not just folks with disabilities. And then we talk about culture and celebrations like the Emancipation Day. I was bringing this up, folks on their way to Nick Enemis, Kansas, found Hutchinson as a place to go home. These are folks who were coming from the South looking for freedom in our state. And since then, we've had a thriving black community here in Hutchinson. And so today's event, today's proclamation, is a reminder of the long history of our community as an inclusive community. Even though there are barriers, even though there might be challenges along the way, we continue that tradition and we just need to continue to remind ourselves of that beautiful history that we have here in Hutchinson, Kansas, of welcoming black folks and having a celebration like the Emancipation Day open to everyone. But I'm going to let Kathy talk to us about what they have planned for this year.
I thought she was going to get away.
Yeah, I did. Thank you. My name is Kathy Fuller and I'm with the Hutchinson Emancipation Committee. And we have a lot of great activities available this year, like starting on Thursday, August fourth. First, we do have a discussion at the museum, so we hope everyone comes out to that. We do have a paper that we'll give so everyone knows. Also, Friday, we have Fun Night and that's for families to come over to Rice Park. We have a lot of activities also continuing that. We have Jazz in the Park. We'll have Rudy Love Jr. on with that. That goes our parade on Saturday morning at ten. We hope the community comes out and supports us. And then we end on Sunday with our Gospel Fest. So we do have a lot of great activities planned this year and we just hope each one comes out and helps us celebrate because it is for everyone. Thank you.
Can I add some things?
Yeah.
Our Parade Marshal for this year, it's our one hundred and thirty-fifth year that we're celebrating. And I would like to also say that Mr. James Woodson and Mr. Bert Raddick, and there's another man, are responsible for getting going with the emancipation. And I just wanted to give them, of course, they're no longer here, but I wanted to give them a shout out. Our Parade Marshal for Saturday is Sean James. And some of you may have went to school with him or some of you know him. He used to play for the Minnesota Vikings and he's a Hutchinson hometown guy. He'll be our Parade Marshal. And we do have a dance and that's the only thing that we charge for is the dance. So you guys are all welcome to come out, shake a leg with us, or come, you know, join any and all of the activities we have planned. We want to see you guys all there. Oh, our picnic, that's that's great. We have a free picnic that Hutchinson Community College helps us put on. See, we all of us got to remember. It's on Saturday after the parade. And it's also free and we got a good meal planned and some activities for the kids. And we have a band called the George Sanders Band from Lyons, Kansas, that's really, really popular. So, you know, if I've got anything, most most can step up and say.
Just come see me after dance. So if you want to have a good time and enjoy and party and have a good time.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, at this time, if anybody would like to speak to the council, you would have five minutes, as long as it's not something that's already on the agenda. If you want to speak to an agenda item, I will call on you for that. Please state your name.
Absolutely. Nathan Spencer, Administrator at Sunshine Meadows Retirement Community. And I just wanted to come today and announce that we're excited about opening a new memory care unit out there at our facility. And the name of it is Sela, Sela Memory Care. And it's coming this summer. We plan to open the doors beginning of August. Of course, as with anything else, there's lots of inspections and stuff like that to pass first. But hoping beginning of August, we can open. And we're excited to be able to offer the highest standard of care for those with the earliest stages of dementia. So we've got a dementia care unit in part of our skilled nursing and have had for decades. But this is a kind of beginning phase or beginning stages of dementia care services. So we're excited to get that open and just wanted to let everybody know about it.
Well, thank you.
We'll have some flyers. I don't know if we can leave some, but we'll have some.
Certainly, you're welcome to leave some on the chair.
Okay, we'll do.
I'll grab one on the way out.
All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you for being here.
You bet.
Anybody else from the audience? Hi, Alec.
Morning, Council. Alex Sting, Hutchinson Regional Airport Director. I'm excited to announce that we have been selected for a stop on the Kansas Aviation Tour. It's an event sponsored by the Kansas Department of Transportation, Division of Aviation. It's going to be held on Friday, September thirteenth, from twelve thirty to four P M. This year marks a bit of a change for the Kansas Aviation Tour. There's going to be fewer destinations on the tour this year with longer stops focusing on education. We're anticipating around two dozen professionals showcasing different careers in aviation. The event is open to the public. We are encouraging surrounding school districts to join us. And that's basically it. We'll have more information coming out soon.
All right, thank you.
Can you, can you, can you say what time that event was?
Twelve thirty to four P M.
Thank you.
Will there be some airplanes on display possibly?
Yeah, several airplanes, several pilots. It used to be pretty much just a kind of fly in, hang out for a bit, and then fly out. But Department of Aviation's wanted to transition to more educational focus.
Very good.
Yep.
I got a question for you real quick.
Yes, sir.
My dad was the Air Force. I'm an Air Force brat. Is there any time you can get the Blue Angels or the Thunderbirds over here?
Oh, I would love that. You know, the Blue Angels do come to the region, especially with McConnell Air Force Show, Air Force Base Show. It is something we can always try to explore. We're currently exploring the possibility of an air show. So we're trying to get organized and figure out what that's going to look like. We actually have a advisory committee meeting today and that's one of the topics we're talking about.
I know it's a little hard to probably get to because they're probably full in their schedule, but I'd like to see that here sometime in Hutchinson.
Yeah, I know their schedule's kind of planned several years out. But if that's, if that's something we can achieve, we'll definitely try.
Okay.
Good.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Alec.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience like to speak? Hello, Jackson?
Good morning. I'm Jackson Swer. I'm Jackson Swer, Executive Director for Startup Hutch. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to talk to you this morning about our organization. I know that there's a study session later. We have our Board of Directors meeting later this morning as well. So I appreciate you accommodating me to speak a little bit earlier and talk a little bit about Startup Hutch. Before I go any further, though, I want to invite you and the rest of our community out to our monthly Entrepreneurship Connections event that's taking place this evening at five thirty P M. at Sand Hills Brewing on Second. The mingle is free and open to anyone in the community who has a business, is thinking about starting a business, or would like to support local businesses. So I think that's probably everybody. Our featured guests this month are from Heartland Credit Union and I know they're going to be bringing some very fun activities and we'll have some prizes to give away. So I hope I'll see you all at five thirty at Sand Hills. Okay, so a little background on Startup Hutch. I wanted to provide a little extra history this time, especially for Enrico, who's new. We originally formed in the nineteen eighties as a business incubator called the Quest Center. We're an independent five oh one C three, but we have close ties with the Hutchinson Community College. They now own the building where we're located. We sold it to them in the two thousand and ten's. And they renovated what is now known as the Peel Center into classroom spaces for nursing and other programs. We occupy a corner of that building, which the college provides rent-free. And that space, along with a receptionist, I T. and H R. support, we estimate to be approximately forty to forty-five thousand in kind contribution from the college. We're very grateful for our connection to the college and they play a key role in providing support and oversight for our organization. In addition to reporting to my Board of Directors, I also report to Bryce McFarlane, the V P. of Workforce Development and Outreach to the College. Briefly continuing on the topic of oversight, I want to mention that we do hold an ex officio spot on the board for the city manager or their designee. And because of the scheduling, that's sometimes a challenge to do. But we're hopeful that Enrico or someone who he designates will be able to attend our board meetings going forward. And we extend a similar offering to Randy Partington. Back to the history, support for the college helps us keep a lean staff, but we've been a bit too lean in the past. In two thousand and eighteen, when we were still the still the Quest Center, the Entrepreneurship Task Force was formed by the Hutchinson Community Foundation. The organization Startup Hutch had been reduced, well, the Quest Center then, was reduced to one staff person and the entrepreneurship ecosystem felt stagnant. Over two years, the task force met and gathered information in the form of local surveys and town halls, as well as researching best practices from other communities. And while they initially thought that there might not be enough resources for entrepreneurs, what they discovered was that the resources existed and our local support ecosystem was disconnected. During that same period, the Community Foundation, along with others, participated in what was called the Community Philanthropy Innovators Network. And I joined that group in my role at the time as the Health Equity Community Specialist at the Health Department to help the group think about how philanthropy plays a role in economic development, particularly providing resources to make it possible for all people to thrive in our local economy, regardless of their background, who they are, where they live. That gave us connections to organizations like E Two Entrepreneurial Ecosystems with Don Mackey, an expert with decades of experience in developing rural entrepreneurs across the Midwest. Along with our statewide entrepreneurship ecosystem partner, Network Kansas, we had the right thought partners to find the right moves for the organization and our local ecosystem. All of this culminated in the Reno County Entrepreneurship Action Plan, a five-year plan from two thousand and twenty through two thousand and twenty-four. Alongside that action plan, the Community Foundation invested significantly in our local ecosystem, granting Startup Hutch a five-year, ninety thousand dollar a year grant to expand our capacity and execute the plan. I'm happy to say that we've successfully done that and we're in the process of working on the next five-year action plan with the Reno County Entrepreneurship Ecosystem Partnership, or R C E P. We really like our long acronyms, which is what the Entrepreneurship Task Force evolved into. That group includes local funding partners, local entrepreneurs, and our economic development partners like the Chamber and Sched. And that group helps provide oversight to our work as well and ensure we're being responsive responsive to the entrepreneurship ecosystem. In two thousand and twenty was when we did the rebrand to Startup Hutch and made a significant commitment to increasing our marketing and communications about our services and all of the regional resources that are available to entrepreneurs. We've learned that we need to consistently put ourselves out in front of people to remind people that we exist, particularly in today's media environment where everything moves so quickly. But we've built a successful following and we're always looking for new ways to get our name out as well. For example, our start our podcast, The Hot Seat, which I hope all of you will subscribe to. And we're even on the radio every Saturday morning with segments of that podcast. These efforts are translating into a large online community with nearly fourteen hundred followers on Facebook and over three hundred and fifty individuals in our private ideas exchange Facebook group. We're also generating a lot of foot traffic into our organization. I recently reviewed a report that I spoke to eighty-two entrepreneurs in the past twelve months. The goal for our action plan is fifty clients a year, so we're exceeding those expectations. And that doesn't count the dozens of other business owners that I've spoken to less formally at events and even in their businesses that just didn't make it into my client management software. Another critical part of the action plan was to expand our staff. We could have never achieved what we accomplished in the past four and a half years otherwise. In two thousand and twenty, I was hired as the Entrepreneur Navigator and Director. I worked alongside former Director Dave Ducart until his retirement at the end of two thousand and twenty-two. I want to just give a brief shout out to Dave for the history here. He carried the organization by himself for years and showed immense grace and dedication to the entrepreneurship ecosystem when I came onboard and we transitioned the leadership of the organization. He was really critical in helping me land on my feet in the role and also spent six months training our new program administrator, Christopher, as we were managing that transition. We're continuing the tradition of passing along the torch and increasing capacity of our ecosystem by hiring a new Entrepreneur Navigator, Mario Hawkins, earlier this year. Mario, wave hi. We are coming to the end of this grant from the Hutchinson Community Foundation, but we have secured another grant to replace it from the K-State one oh five program, a new initiative funded by the state legislature to expand rural entrepreneurship. We're a pilot program to provide funding for hyper-local entrepreneur service organizations like Startup Hutch, and we're hopeful that our success will lead to more funding from the state. And we received two years of funding for the new position at sixty thousand dollars a year from K-State. Also, we got an award from our statewide partners for this great work, bringing in new Entrepreneur Navigators. Okay, I'll touch briefly on the funding now, and I'll try to wrap up quickly. When I began this role, the city did not fund our organization at all. Part of the action plan was to increase the overall funding for the entrepreneurship ecosystem from our local funding partners by increasing the amount coming from the county and by bringing the City of Hutchinson onboard. The goal was by twenty twenty-four to get both entities at ninety thousand dollars a year, essentially matching the initial investment from the Community Foundation. You made good on that plan this year, and I appreciate that. I've spoken to each of you through the years and months. I know all of you understand the value of investing in our local entrepreneurs, and I think our community is stronger because the City of Hutchinson is now a part of that funding mix. In the documents I provided along with my budget request, you'll see that funding a new person will put some strain on our budget in future years. However, the organization has been fiscally conservative under my leadership, and we have reserved funds and can operate at a small deficit if we need to. Our goal is to continue to pursue other statewide sources of funding, as well as private and philanthropic funding to fill the gap. It makes us more resilient to have a more diverse set of funders. I'm asking you right now to stay the course with us. My commitment to you is to keep our funding request level for at least a few years now that you've come up to the level that we ask you to. Back to the fun stuff. Because of expanded capacity, we're able to increase the amount of programming we bring to Hutchinson and Reno County. We continue with monthly Entrepreneurship Connections mingles, which are free and open to all residents. We have also developed new partnerships with the Small Business Development Center at W. S. U., which began in June, to provide on-state assistance, or sorry, onsite assistance with business planning and financial projections at the Hutchinson Public Library, which reduces barriers to accessing those services. Also, this June, we launched our third cohort of Entrepreneur Business Basics, a training and pitch competition for new entrepreneurs. This is, which was held for the second time last year, continues to be a great success. We partner with the City of Hutch Human Relations Office for that as well, which includes a resource fair for participants that will be at City Hall in a few weeks. Later this year, we plan to reprise our Building Wealth in Our Business Luncheon Learns, the successful series of luncheons last year that we put on in collaboration with the Hutch Chamber. And finally, we, well, not finally at all, but one more thing. We will host our annual Youth Entrepreneurship Challenge, a regional competition for Reno County high school students, the winner of which is invited to the Kansas Entrepreneurship Challenge at K-State. We also leave room for additional experimental programming as needed, directed by that R. C. E. P. group. And we've left out a number of other great programs and initiatives that we do, including a Manufacturing Expo in partnership with Greater Hutch last year. And I'm really excited to see what more we can do going into the future and how we can expand our existing offerings going forward. You'll notice in all of those stories that we collaborate deeply with lots of other partners. And as a result of that collaboration, we won another award for our ecosystem-building work through Network Kansas. I'll conclude with just a few numbers to drive home why this is a good investment for the city. We can take the most credit for the people that we loan money to. I certainly think that we help quite a few more entrepreneurs in this community. But with our loan funds, our goal is for each year, for the past five years, has been to loan out two hundred thousand dollars a year. We do that through a variety of different loan funds, some of which are local, but most of which come from statewide partners like Network Kansas. So in other words, we're loaning out other people's money and bringing it into the community. Last year, we exceeded that goal, loaning out three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. And since I started in twenty twenty, the period of the action plan, we have loaned out over one point two million to local businesses, leveraging over four million dollars in outside financing. So that's five million dollars in economic activity that's made possible by Startup Hutch, the network of resources that we help connect local entrepreneurs and you, the City of Hutchinson, through your funding. I think that's a good return on investment, and I hope you do as well. Once again, I invite you and everyone else present or listening online to join us at Entrepreneurship Connections this evening at five thirty P. M. at Sand Hills Brewing. We host that every month on the third Tuesday. I'm happy to stand for any questions now, and of course, you can reach out to me, stock offline if you have any deeper questions. Thank you.
Counsel, do you have any questions? And I appreciate, Counsel, you giving me a little grace with letting.
Yes, sorry, I think I might have run over my five minutes.
You did, but that, you, you got a, you, you had a four-year grant from Hutchinson Community Foundation.
Five-year, twenty twenty through twenty.
And now you have a two-year grant from K-State that, that kind of replaces that money for a couple of years.
Close, close enough.
Gotcha. All right. Unless Counsel has any other questions, thank you, Jackson. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your ongoing support.
All right. Appreciate it. All right. Is there anybody else here that would like to speak to the Counsel? You have five minutes or however long we decide, apparently. But anyway, if, if, if there's nobody else here that would like to speak to the Counsel, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Has everybody read, looked at that? Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. So I just want to say that I appreciate the work that the Board of Zoning Appeals, the staff, and, and the Planning and Zoning Committee puts into things like the letter D, the Approval Request to Rezone This Property. The information that we receive is always very thorough and well-vetted, and it really makes it easy for us to trust what, what's being provided to us to make our decision. And I know that, having attended the zoning at least once, that they really take a lot into their consideration as well. So when it comes to us from them, I have no doubt that everything is on the up and up. And I just appreciate the work that they've put into their board and their work and the staff as well.
I appreciate you saying that. I attended their last meeting, and wow, they, they cross every T. and dot every I. And that, that shows on this, in the consent agenda background stories. So anyway, any other comments?
No.
All right. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Yes. Next item, please.
Consider resolution approving a special event in the designated entertainment district for the Southwest Bricktown Fiesta.
Paul Brown, City Attorney. You have before you a proposed resolution for the Southwest Bricktown Fiesta on September twenty-one. It will involve the three hundred block of West First, just down the street from the courthouse for the event. This will allow alcohol to be served in the street there at that location. Ask you to approve.
Going forward, is this something we can put in the consent, consent agenda? I've, I've asked you this before. Is this something we would never not approve? And you said it's state statute for us to come before us. So can we put that in the consent agenda or?
You know, I'm not going to allow you to put that in the consent agenda.
Well, is it because you're not going to allow us? Or is it because it's state statute?
This is before you for the resolution to approve the special event. And we will always present those under resolutions and ordinances.
Okay.
I think it's appropriate to have them as standalone agenda items because each one, each event is different. And I would never want to consider them lumped into something else, especially when there's alcohol being served. We're providing electricity and services essentially. So I think there's value in keeping it separated. And as long as you guys continue to run a good event, then we'd have no reason to not approve it.
Yeah, I, I, again, I don't think we would never not approve these. So anyway, never not. This was a question, you know, in, in my opinion, this is an easier decision than rezoning a part of the city. And rezoning a part of the city is in the consent agenda.
Because it already came out of committee.
Right.
We also don't have an advisory board for parties.
That is correct.
Are you volunteering to form one?
And Mayor, for your benefit.
Yes.
That is new with that rezoning appearing on the consent agenda. I am allowing a little latitude to this person that we hired from Wichita. That's how they handle it over there. And I said, all right, we'll try it. We'll see what the, what the Counsel says and see how it goes. And if it's successful, then we will continue to do so. Now, you've caused confusion with the Counsel with the matters that I present, so we're going to have to think this over.
No, I'm not. And Matt, I appreciate your background and you pushing that. And I think what you said makes a lot of sense. But as we're sitting here discussing this, I think to myself, well, this seems like an easier decision than the item that was on the consent agenda. So that, that was my, that was a reason for my question. And I brought this up before, got the same answer. Next item, please.
Do you need a motion?
Have we, have we, please make a motion if anybody?
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution to authorize a special event in a designated entertainment district pursuant to City Code Section eighteen eight oh one for the Southwest Bricktown Fiesta and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Item seven B. Consider twenty twenty-five budget resolution of intent to exceed revenue neutral rate.
Angela Richard, Director of Finance. Before you, you have a resolution of our intent to exceed revenue neutral rate for the twenty twenty-five budget. This is part of the revenue neutral rate policies. We need to approve a resolution, which gives myself authority to tell the county that we intend to exceed our revenue neutral rate. And it sets the hearing for the revenue neutral exceedance for September third. Per the S. B. thirteen that was passed, this hearing needs to be between August twentieth and September twentieth. So September third is the normal meeting that would align with those dates. So per our last study session, we decided that we would keep the mill levy flat with the twenty twenty-four budget. So the twenty twenty-four budget mill levy was forty point three two six. This resolution would keep that mill levy the same. Our revenue neutral rate, mill levy would be thirty-eight point three seven. So that is an increase of one point nine six mills. So with that, are there any questions?
I feel like every, every year we go through this, and there's a little, this, this, even the years where we do hit revenue neutral, we vote to exceed revenue neutral because of the consequences of going over revenue neutral if we don't declare this. What are the consequence, even if we're a dollar over revenue neutral?
We have to figure out a way to pay that dollar back to the taxpayers.
And divide it up by forty-some thousand people, or whatever it ends up being.
Correct. So it is advised that we do this as, if we do want to even keep the revenue neutral rate. This year, there has been some modifications to that that would allow the county clerk to reduce the mill levy. Because what happens between now and November first is the valuation could change. So if the valuation changes and we said we want our mill levy at thirty-eight point three seven, the valuation increases, that would mean that we are collecting more revenue than revenue neutral. So we would have exceeded. The, the county clerk now has the authority to decrease that mill levy to keep us in line, so we wouldn't have that penalty. But just as a precaution in case the county clerk didn't catch that, it, it is still advised to go ahead and, and go through the revenue neutral exceedance procedures.
I think this is, the process that you just spoke to is one of those things that happens after legislation is passed and, you know, they didn't quite figure out how it would work. And it's kind of a moving target with the timeline of events. And so I think it's being tweaked, and there's even more talk about changing this process again come the next legislative session. So who knows what we'll get into next year. But based on our conversations at our last study session, I think we're all committed to staying as close as possible, if not hitting revenue neutral. And this is just one of those, we got to do it type of things. So hopefully, somebody comes to speak to us because the state's making us spend time on this.
Counsel, I would like to add as well that Angela and I are exploring creating a few different programs. One would be a utility billing assistance program to help offset some utility billing costs. And also looking at a property tax abatement for senior citizens. You know, as assessed valuations increase, which is something that the city does not control, it's not a function of the city, we do recognize that the burden that it does place on those that are on fixed income. And so we are going to explore what that could look like. Several cities such as Topeka, they have a program like that. I believe the city of Manhattan as well. So we're, could probably just mimic what they do or tweak it some. But whatever we could do to help those that, that need the help, we'll try. And so just look forward to those programs in the future.
Also wanted to note that this is the max mill levy that we're setting that, that we can adopt. If in the future we, we find out something has changed and we want to reduce the mill levy at the September third meeting, we could do that. So this is just setting that max that we could levy.
Anything else from the Counsel?
No.
No.
All right. Do you have a motion or second?
I will move to approve twenty twenty-five budget resolution of intent to exceed revenue neutral rate. Authorize, authorizing other related documents and actions and authorize the mayor to sign. Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
So we're looking at the hearing on September third.
Correct.
Okay.
What is the August twentieth? Uh, that's the soonest we could have a revenue neutral hearing. It, it has to be between August twentieth and September twentieth. So the third is the meeting that falls between those dates.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Next item, please.
Item seven C. Consider ordinance authorizing general obligation bond for certain completions.
I was wondering if you would like to hear about the turf first because this ordinance approves bonding the turf, and the next item is Justin presenting the, the bid for the turf and the M. O. Us.
Okay, so they're reversed. Does that, you, okay.
If we could. Do we need to amend the agenda?
No.
Is there a motion to amend the agenda, moving New Business eight A in place and moving seven C after that?
I don't think technically we need to amend the agenda because they're already on there, and the order isn't, doesn't matter.
Mayor, you control the order of the items on the agenda. You can just bypass that and say we're coming back.
We will come back to that. Thank you, Angela, for mentioning that. Justin, or next, let's go to the next item, read the item.
Item eight, New Business A. Consider contract of M. A. Sports Construction Galaxy for the installation of synthetic turf at Plum Valley Fields number two to number three and Hobart Dutter Field.
Good morning. Justin Coombs, Director of Parks and Facilities. There's actually three items kind of all, all in one. First, the bid results for the turf and then the two cost-share agreements with H. C. C. and U. S. D. three oh eight. But we'll jump right into the turf project itself. So this is Hobart Dutter Field. This is the design we came up with for the field. As you can see, stripes in the outfield, large H. Wanted to, to really speak to any team that could play there from Hutchinson, so didn't necessarily do, you know, Blue Dragon or anything like that, but wanted everybody to, to feel like it's their home field. It's also a little hard to see, but behind home plate, we also have in script just the word Hutch. The font could change as we move forward. The idea, the idea is just to, to really make that pop. In the, in the bid, you'll see later on, we do have this zone right here that I'm highlighting with the laser pen. That is one of the add alternates. That we're, I labeled that as what I call a fan experience zone. And so essentially, that is artificial turf that we can set up temporary seating and tables for games. So think of for a Monarchs game or something, you could be out on the same turf that the players are out playing on. If you bring a ball and glove, you know, you can maybe play catch for a little bit. The college would also use this as a warm-up space, a space to, you know, to do some stretching, those sorts of things. So we'll get into some of the other alternates, but I just wanted to point that out. Uh, this is a hundred percent turf, so wall to wall uh turf. Um, and then both bullpens, so the um home bullpen um is up here. Um, and then the visitor bullpen's here. So those are the current locations of them, but it does include artificial turf on those. Uh, this is Fun Valley number two, so this is home of uh the high school softball team, uh, very, very similar looks. So same stripes in the outfield, same H, uh, same detail behind home, home plate with the Hutch. Um, also, um, one of the other alternates we added are bullpens for the softball fields. We currently do not have bullpens, so. Uh, for pitchers to warm up, they're generally warming up on the field. Um, and so on this field, because of um the playground. Only have a single um bullpen for the visitor team and then for the home team, we have a double. Uh, Fun Valley Field Three, this is home of um HCC softball, uh, identical to Field Two. Uh, there wasn't enough space to do a double bullpen on both sides, so that's the only difference um on that field, so. Uh, through this slide in here, um, just to kinda drive home the point that the turf itself, they're all very similar. I mean, there's some differences in the turf itself, but really um the overall performance of the system and the longevity of the system is what you don't see. It's underground, it's the drainage, it's the base, it's all those, those types of things. Um, we worked with PEC out of Wichita for all the design work, uh, for all the specifications. Um, and I, I won't go through them all, but there's a, a ton of stuff underground that you never see, uh, that really is what makes these systems work and work well. Um, now to the actual bid results, I had five bidders, um, all but Spirit or Sprint turf were pre-approved. Um, so we looked at their specs, um, and they all actually met, so we did look at, look at Spirit after the fact, or Sprint after the fact. Um, you can see really tight. Uh, the difference between high and low was like twelve percent. Um, so Mammoth Sports Construction Adamarium was low, uh, two million two hundred sixty thousand dollars. Um, I will point out that we did ask for these numbers right here. Uh, we are not anticipating replacing fence. But if something happens and we need to replace fence, we already have a linear foot number for that, so that's not something we have to negotiate down the road. Um, you can see the numbers here and then these are those um add alternates, so the fan um fan experience zone for Hobart Detter. And then the bullpens for Field Two and Three, and you can see the numbers with those. Um, so it does bring that total number for Mammoth, uh, two million two hundred sixty thousand. Um, a little bit about Mammoth, um, so Mammoth installs Field Turf product. Excuse me. Um, one thing that we are really impressed with Mammoth and with Field Turf, um, and I'm not gonna go through what all this means. Um, but the product they install is specifically designed for baseball softball. Um, actually their baseball product is slightly different than their softball product. Um, just because of the way the turf interacts with the ball. Um, so this isn't just, you know, soccer um turf or football turf. This is specifically designed um so that the ball plays as close to a natural surface as possible. Um, a ton of research, a ton of third party research um went into this product. Um, earlier this spring, a team from the city, uh, from the community college, from USD three oh eight and Hutch Rec went on some field trips. We went and looked at several fields. Um, this is one we looked at, William Jewel, um, in the Kansas City area. Uh, this was a Mammoth project with Field Turf. This is the exact same turf we're looking at. Uh, really impressed with this, this field. We also looked at Leavenworth High School. Um, they have several fields, so I think there's a fourplex you can see in the bottom. Um, one thing we really liked about Leavenworth was we got a chance to talk with the maintenance folks there. And that's really where we understood how much maintenance goes into these fields. Uh, you know, it's not a, you put turf on and you walk away. Um, there's daily maintenance. It's not near as heavy as daily maintenance on a natural field. Um, it, but it was great to, to talk with uh the maintenance staff and they were actually out prepping for a game, so to see that firsthand. Um, so it was a, a really good experience. Uh, we also looked at this one, Basier Linwood High School. Um, we saw the, really the exact opposite on this one. This is also a Mammoth Field Turf um project. What we noticed here was basically at every base you slide into, so second and third, there was a pretty big divot. Um, so their maintenance staff had not been doing that daily maintenance, even though these fields are only a couple of years old, they looked a lot older. Um, and so it was good that, that we saw these and, and really understood the consequences of not doing some of that, that simple maintenance. We talked with the head baseball coach and we asked him like, who's taking care of these fields? And he didn't know. So he wasn't doing it, the maintenance staff wasn't doing it, so you know, they've got millions of dollars in turf, it's, uh, it's gonna fail prematurely. So again, glad we were able to, to go and look at some of those, those fields. Uh, we looked at um fields from another vendor as well. Um, all three of those were from Mammoth. So this is just something I stole off their website. So these are not Mammoth installations, these are Field Turf installations. You can see there's some big names on that. Um, the ones that got cut up on, cut off on the top also includes University of Texas baseball. Um, so very, very premium product um that they installed. Um, it is my recommendation to proceed with Mammoth Sports Construction um for all three fields uh for amounts of two million two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Uh, with that, I'll answer any questions.
What does the maintenance look like on those? I mean.
Yeah, um, so on a, on a daily basis, um, on those high wear areas, so. Uh, where the pitcher stands in the batter's box, um, it's taking a stiff um bristle broom and sweeping that infill material back to where it goes. What causes turf to wear out prematurely is that infill material, so that rubber sand mix gets pushed out. And then you're, you're interfacing with the back of the turf. So think of turf, it looks a lot like carpet, so it has a, a, a backing to it. And so when cleats start getting into that backing, then you start, actually the fibers start coming out. And, and um, the backing starts to, to tear. So a lot of it's just making sure that rubber gets put back in place. Um, on an annual basis, um, in, in, in the contract, they'll do it, I wanna say the first five years is included. Um, they take a, uh, and Mammoth will come in with a kind of a deep tying rake and kinda rake everything back. It stands the fibers back up. Um, and then they also spot check to make sure we have the right amount of fill throughout, throughout the entire field. Um, those are really the, the two biggest things. Um, for the amount of play these fields are gonna get. It's really likely that we'll have to replace the actual batter's box and the pitching area within the first couple of years. Um, we will, through this contract, we buy enough turf to replace those, I think, three times. Um, and so there will be a small fee to have them come out and resew them back in. Um, but again, you, if we're doing that on an annual basis and, and we're only needing to repair the batter's box, that's a whole lot better than losing a whole seam or something, so. You know, and one thing when we have um tournaments that will be important, and I'm glad that Hutch Rec was able to go on these, these field trips with us. Is there will be an expectation that after every game or every other game, that somebody's out there just kinda s- um, brooming that material back in. Um, you know, the college is already on board with, we may have a five gallon bucket of infill material in the dugout. And so after each practice, they just take a cup and just kinda sprinkle it in and kinda work it, work it back in, so.
Okay, I got a couple of questions for you.
Yep.
First question is, how do they put that down? That's got a rubber backing. Do they put stakes down to hold the field down or how does it?
Yeah, so um, the, the key to the construction is the, is the base, so there's a minimum of six inches. Um, we're gonna have some areas that are closer to eight inches of rock base that's compacted. Um, and then the turf comes in twelve foot rolls, they roll it out in twelve foot rolls. Um, and they, they staple it along the edges. So along the edges, there will be a concrete border uh with a board. It'll be a synthetic, so like a Teryx type board all the way around, and then it gets stapled or nailed to that board. What actually holds the turf in place is the weight of the sand and the weight of the infill material. Um, and so that's a great test. Um, you can just go out there, if you can grab the turf and if you can lift it, then there's not enough material there holding it down. Cause you also don't want that turf moving and rubbing on the, on the rock underneath.
Second question. Now, that's turf, it doesn't need to be watered, so our sprinkler system is to be shut off or what?
Correct, yeah, yep.
So will we save uh electricity and some, it's all well water, I know that, comes out of.
Yeah, Hobart Detter is not, Hobart Detter is city water.
Okay.
And that probably takes just as much as, as Fun Valley. So there will, there will be some cost savings there. I mean, we do irrigate all the other fields, so. Um, and we've already looked into how we can cap that system um without disrupting everything else.
Last question. We have, the infill's gonna be turf, is the outfield gonna be turf too?
Yes, yeah, on all, all uh three fields, um, so even the, uh, the softball field's a hundred percent turf, so wall to wall.
Yes. Hey, always wondering, are you gonna see a couple of carpet with anything, you know, they hit, straighten it out, you know carpet when you lay carpet?
Yeah, um, I, I don't know if that's the exact tool they use, but most of the, of the folks that install it are former carpet installers.
I see.
Cause it's very, very similar to how, in the way you, you glue and sew, the seams are very, yeah.
Fascinating.
Yeah, I was always wondering how they put that down.
Um, and we, we, uh, with our contract with PEC, um, we also have construction administration as part of that, so they will be out on site. Multiple times, making sure they're doing all the little things, right? All the stuff that gets covered up with the turf, um, so. So we'll have professional engineers on site throughout the whole process.
Is there a warranty on that stuff, on our turf?
There is, uh, this comes with an eight year warranty. Um, the life of the actual turf product. Um, you know, ten to twelve years is about what most people get. You know, if you go, if you go beyond that, you're doing really, really well. Um, and the good thing is after that ten to twelve years, when you do need to replace it, you're not replacing the whole system. It's just the actual turf and infill material, so it's significantly less to do that. But there is a life, a life to these.
Last question. On the water, when it rains a lot, like especially uh, uh, the Detterfield, they, we have a lot of water issues out there. Is the water issues, will standing water gonna be taken care of in the drainings?
Yeah, so the image is on the screen now, so all those lines are under, underground tiles or drain tiles. Uh, so you, there, we should never have standing water on the field. I mean, even on a, um, you know, our heaviest rains, we should never have standing. We don't want standing water that causes that infill material to migrate. Um, and so the, the water should get off extremely, extremely quickly. Uh, we have identified sites for all three fields uh where that will daylight, so where we can, uh, you know, we'll have a. I wanna say it's an eight inch, um, could be even larger, could be twelve inch pipe that comes out from all the fields. So you can kinda see on the, on the drawing there how everything's connected uh for that drain system, so.
Last but not least, the Bud Detterfield has a drainage problem in back of the backstop. Uh, the water was staying there, I mean.
Yep.
That problem gonna be taken care of?
That, this will a hundred percent take care of that, yes.
And part of that problem is because of the way that the building is.
The shade, yeah.
Doesn't allow that part to get any sun and so everything else will dry out, but then it's just soggy down there.
Yeah, okay. Then in the spring, it freezes overnight and then, yeah, so this will take care of a hundred percent of the, the drainage issue.
So you're guaranteeing us a hundred percent no rain outs on these fields?
I'm guaranteeing no rain outs due to field conditions.
Okay.
Now, if it's pouring cats and dogs during the game time, they're not gonna play in the rain, but they can play minutes after the rain has stopped.
And I know that they have the big uh covering zone, or you call them. Um, does this require new tarps? Or does that come with?
So we'll use mats and not tarps. Um, so you, you won't necessarily need to cover this.
Okay.
Um, but we will use, especially for practices. Um, so the college will put out mats over home, uh, you know, over home and the batter's boxes. Um, their pitchers will always be throwing off of mats other than the games. Um, for softball, um, we'll probably do mats um every time. So the pitcher will, even the college will not be throwing off of the actual turf and will be throwing off a mat that gets laid down, so.
And that helps reduce wear, wear.
Yeah, yeah, softball pitchers are actually the hardest. Um, if you ever watched a really good softball pitcher, uh, when she drags her back, back foot. If she does that just time and time again, it really creates a groove. Um, and, and you know, one pitcher, a really strong pitcher could get all the way down to the backing in a matter of one game, so.
Does the daily maintenance require any additional training for your staff or for Hutch Rec staff?
It will, yes. And that's something that's in the contract for them to do that training ahead of time or during the process and then on that annual uh inspection.
And then all of the, like, in between games, the expectation would be that the players, the coaches or bat boys or somebody is going and doing the infill?
For um, for Hobart Detter, yes, the college will do that um after practice, um after games, before games. Uh, for tournaments, that's really gonna fall on Hutch Rec. I mean, they already have maintenance staff there that's re-chalking uh every other game, every third game, something like that, so yeah.
Well, I'm really excited about this. Being a former baseball coach, uh, this is gonna be great to, uh, for tournaments and everything. When is the starting date and when's it, how long is it gonna take to finish it?
So I don't have an exact starting date yet, um, but the um completion date is December thirty first of this year. So we're gonna lose a little bit of uh, a fall uh practice for the college. They're gonna have to go to uh Rice Park. Uh, but we'll be up and running uh for the, I mean, they start practicing in January or, or earlier if they can. So we'll be up and running for the spring season for both.
Not to put you on the spot, but at Bud Detter, we have new lights, we're gonna have new turf. Is there anything outstanding we need to take care of too at Bud Detter, do you know?
So there is a project in uh the five year CIP, it's a fairly large project to address the concession stand. Um, you know, we bid that out several years ago, kinda right in the, in that price hike of everything and, you know, prices just, just didn't match the budget. Um, so we need to revisit that as well as the actual press box and the canopy over the aluminum stand. You know, the bleachers themselves are relatively new. Uh, but the canopy structure really needs to get, get addressed. And then if you've ever been to the press box, you'll know that those need to be, need to be replaced. So there is a project, I wanna say twenty seven, I could be a year off on that, um, to replace that canopy structure. And then the intent would be to add concessions back with that and then a um, a new press box, so.
I hope that when we look at this, that this is the beginning of the projects and the improvements at Hobart Detter and at Fun Valley. Because doing turf is alone is not enough to make us a competitive environment for the tournaments that we're losing Twitch Talk and Great Bend and all of the other. Um, awesome facilities. Um, I would hope that there's an intent to ask HCC and the school um to partner on those improvements as well. Um, because they are for their benefit also, even incrementally, they could chip in, it seems like, so.
Yeah, ab- absolutely. And I mean, that's really uh, was a great partnership that we, we've developed with both organizations. Uh, they stepped up big, I mean, it's fifty fifty cost share. Uh, when you look at the number of games, they, they do not play fifty percent of the games on those fields, but they're paying for half of it. So it's been a great partnership and hopeful that will continue for, for future.
I, I would mention that I have not talked to USD three oh eight, uh, but I've talked to the college folks and. And the owner of the Monarchs, Mark Blackham, and we've been talking for a couple of years about this. And you know, his contention is it's a, it's a little bit of an economic driver. You know, when we're canceling games over the years, you know, that's just less people coming. And it, and it is a, an event that people appreciate and, and will show up for. Um, and so I, I'm excited about this. I, I, it's been a long time coming and. And it'll certainly fix Hobart Detter with, cause I've asked all those questions behind the scenes, um, Steve, about, about that. So I know, I, I know that the colleges, they've been willing to help long before this came along, um, and so I'm.
And I know that the list of other improvements is long because it's the parking lot and then it's the lights. Um, and the scoreboards and um restrooms and like, it's like everything needs touched in some way um between both facilities, so. Um, I, I really enjoy the um fountain slash swimming pool that I can't keep my kids out of at Hobart Detter. Um, that one's fun.
I will say also, I met with a gentleman, I believe with the NBC tournament. Um, you know, they, they did a couple of games here in the years past and, and they opted out because they could not depend on not having a rain out. And so, you know, there's a chance that we could get, you know, even a, a few games from a bigger tournament. That's gonna draw people from out of state even in, to this facility. So I mean, I'm just sharing, that's where my head's at. I'm excited and ready to support this project.
You know, another thing too is I've heard great things about Mammoth and I'm actually glad they're the low bidder so we can use them. Because they, they install a great product and they do a great job of what they do, so I'm kinda excited to have them install it. And then another thing while we're talking about this, uh, the money we're gonna spend to do this. I've got comments about at Fun Valley, um, like some of the dugout benches. Are we gonna address some of those issues while we're doing this or is that something?
Uh, so the dugout benches that, um, on field.
Five, six and seven.
Five, six and seven, we've already replaced.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, we, we know guys, we had a new hotel coming, so bring those tournaments on.
That's right.
Well, um, do I hear a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Uh, I need a second.
Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Mayors.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Yes. All right, let's, let's go ahead to the cost share agreement. Um, we're gonna. All right, let's, let's go ahead to the cost share agreement, um, we're gonna consider cost share agreement with Hutch Community College for artificial turf at Fun Valley. Fields two and three and Hobart Deadder.
So, yeah, the, I'll just go over a few of the details, um, so for the community college, um, it's, it's field three at Fun Valley and Hobart Deadder. Um, the college share is one million, six hundred ninety-five thousand dollars, um, in the agreement, that is paid out over ten years. Um, so the city will bond the entire amount, um, and then get reimbursed, um, over ten years. Um, a couple of other things that are important, um, the college has been part of all the design decisions, so even going forward to this, this point. Um, they've been in, 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 uh, in contact, and we've been working through those, those design decisions. And then as we get final drawings, it will also have, uh, be, be part of that process. Also, change orders are covered in the agreement, so, you, I, I know it's an ugly word, but if that happens, um, the, the change orders. Um, we'll talk with the college and with, and with U S D oh three oh, U S D three oh eight, um, and those will be as part of that agreement. So we don't have to eat a hundred percent of any, any change order, now, all of the organizations do have to agree on that, on that change order, so.
All right, do I hear a motion to approve this, and then we'll go on and approve the U S D three oh eight?
I'll move to accept and approve the cost share agreement with Hutchinson Community College for artificial turf at Fun Valley Fields two and three and Hobart Deadder Field, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Makers?
Yes.
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 And then, uh, the contract is exactly the same, other than the amount, so for U S D three oh.
Okay.
Three oh eight's five hundred thousand dollar, um.
All right, and do I hear a motion or a second?
I would move to accept and approve the cost share agreement with U S D three oh eight for artificial turf at Fun Valley Fields two and three and Hobart Deadder Field, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. Somebody said.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Makers?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, all right, let's go back to seven C now, Angela, we're gonna consider an ordinance authorizing general obligation bonds for certain improvements.
Angela Richard, Director of Finance, um, the I R S regulations require that we approve a ordinance or resolution. Allowing us to reimburse certain expenses that we may incur before we actually bond a project. So before you is an ordinance authorizing the following projects, zoo improvements, the fire training center, men's restroom and concrete. Rice Park Playground, Fun Valley Turf, uh, the Bad Bobby Trailhead Project. Um, and those projects come to a cost of three million sixty-five thousand, the total estimated bonded amount would be three million one hundred sixty thousand. Um, all these projects were budgeted in the twenty twenty-four budget, um, and you've now heard the Fun Valley Turf project. So that's why I wanted to move this on the agenda, um, so the next step after this. Would be to come before you with an ordinance allowing us to start the bonding process. So that should come before you within the next month or two. I plan to bond these projects along with the Baker at Sixteenth Avenue Bridge Replacement, which was for one million one hundred fifty-five thousand. Um, so all of those projects will be bonded together in the next few months, um, do you have any questions? If not, I'd recommend approving the ordinance.
All right.
I move to approve an ordinance authori- oh, I'm sorry, I wouldn't wait for any additional questions. Um, mo- motion, I move to approve an ordinance authorizing general obligation bonds for certain improvements and authorize the mayor to sign.
I second that.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Makers?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, next item?
Okay, before you, you have a hard copy of the twenty twenty-three audit, and it was also included in your packet. Um, the audit was performed by Lindberg Vogel Pierce Ferris, and their audit opinion concludes that the financial statements are fairly presented. In all material aspects, this year we were allowed to do an alternate compliance examination engagement with, which is also included in your hard copy. Um, this is an acceptable alternative to a single audit, it allowed us to only concentrate on our ARPA award dollars. Um, instead of doing a full single audit, so that it would save us costs. Um, and today Randy Hofmeyer is here, if you have any questions. He did have an issue that he noted, which is in the governance letter, which is included in the front of your audit report. He found that we did make an overpayment to a contractor, but we have been repaid and we have implemented steps to prevent this in the future.
I'm here to answer any questions that you might have, I will say that in regards to that matter, it was handled very promptly and professionally. They did a great job, I was very pleased.
As a contractor, I was gonna ask, how do I get overpaid for projects?
I just heard a, um, radio report that, um, the ARPA dollars and, um, federal funds. That came from COVID, um, they're really coming under scrutiny right now, um. Some municipalities and school districts weren't so transparent on what they were used for, and they were used improperly. So I'm glad to see that we did everything correctly, and I had the full confidence that we would. But, um, it's always nice to have that confirmed by another party.
Well, and if, if there's ever any clawback from some of those areas, it's gonna reflect well on us that we were transparent on that, if there's new opportunities that come along.
All right, any, any further discussion?
Um, can you speak to how many years we've had clean audits, either one of you?
I've been in charge of the audit for about twelve years, I believe, and they've been clean the whole time.
Thank you.
There, there was, there was one year where we did have an issue with the single audit, I believe it was an F A A report that was filed incorrectly. Um, but since then, that's been resolved, I review F F A grant reports before they're submitted.
I would move to accept the twenty twenty-three audit presentation.
A second?
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Makers?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Steve?
Yes, one big item I'd like to see that I see in our, um, if I can find it here, I see in here that the. Hold on, let me find it, in September, it says they have nine o'clock meeting, are we still doing that, are we going to night meetings in September?
Uh, we will, it'll be five thirty.
Okay.
In September, we will make that change.
Nice try, Greg.
Yeah. Okay, I'm glad I got that, I'm kinda getting sleepy in September. Okay, on mine, um, I will go back to my regular scheduled meetings that I have every two months, fact it's coming this weekend. Saturday, July twentieth, I will have a, a meeting at the Zone at nine o'clock. Our new city manager will be there, and we'll have everything together, come out and find out what's going on with the city. And, uh, I hope to get everybody there and start all over again, and tell everybody what's going on, and, uh, Rico will be there, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
A M or P M?
Excuse me?
A M or P M, nine o'clock?
Oh, nine o'clock A M. At the Zone, you go in the back of the building, to the back of Severance and to the gym, and go right into the gym's tables. And we'll have coffee and donuts there, and so we'll get back into the stream again, I've been waiting for Mr. Rico to get here, now he's here, so we can get things going again. So, one other thing, over there this Saturday, I will have idea tech there, idea tech for, um. God dang, are you just dropped your mind? Caryville, Caryville, we've been working together with Caryville while getting idea tech over there, uh, internet, and idea tech will be there. And tell them what they're doing to get internet for, uh, Caryville, uh, if you're listening to me, tell all Caryville patrons to be at the meeting. On July twentieth at the Zone, okay? Um, one other thing, I've, I've been on this com- council for about six years now, I've been re-elected and everything, and I like working here. But the thing about it is, I'm really proud of my council, they listen to you, I know some things don't go well, like citizens want, don't go their way. But I, I guarantee you, we work hard to resolve problems and, and help the citizens of Hutchinson, as you can see, Hutchinson's moving. Uh, I tell people at my meetings, Hutch is moving, if you don't see, we know it's moving, cause we know what's behind the scenes. New turf in our fields, brand new hotel, if you haven't noticed, things are moving in Hutch. A lot of things are on the agenda, we can't tell you about, but trust me, living in Hutch is a good place to live. And with that, and Mary Grace, you're still doing a great job with the Rico, don't want that forgot you, so other than that, that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
John?
Uh, big race this weekend, Salt City, let's see, the U S A, U S A C Silver Crown, Salt City one hundred is this weekend. And you can find information on that at Salt City Racing L L C dot com, I think there's racing going on Friday and Saturday.
Yes, it's, I think it was the, uh, kinda replaced the Nationals, that were a two or three-day event.
So I encourage everyone to get out there and, and, uh, watch everyone go in circles and have fun, that's all I've got.
All right, Stacy?
I have a question for John, um, or either of you, what, the State Fair just had their board meeting, and they asked Phil for dates for next year, right? It, does that mean that he's being renewed, or I didn't wanna read too much into it?
I had the same question, and I read more than you did into it, I assume that means they're very open to him coming back. Um, they, I, I know they're working around other cattle shows, rodeos, whatever else, so.
You have as much information as I do on that.
Yeah.
Well, we, we'll be there, um, I don't know, like, a week ago or so, my sister and I went on a field trip downtown, down by Cary Park. Um, really just to look at, like, the tree damage and, um, some of that, and, um, I sent pictures to Mary Grace Clemens. Um, there are properties that are far damaged beyond repair, that, um, residents are going to have a hard time. Um, essentially, even if they have good insurance, they're gonna have a hard time, um, repairing those, so, um, there's a couple more. Um, that have come to my attention since then, um, that I'll be sending an email to you guys about, um, just so we can reach out to the residents. And see what their end goal is, because when a hundred-year-old tree falls on your house, um, and destroys it, it's pretty unfortunate. And I think some property owners have walked away, which opens up that property for theft, um, blight, mold. Um, essentially turning it into something that's not going to be rehabable, um, so, those are things that I'll, I'll be sending an email about. Um, while we were down there, um, we visited Elmdale Park, um, and I had a conversation with Mary Grace about that as well. To try to get some just very general, um, cleanup and improvements done, um, like removing the tennis court, or the tennis nets. Um, picking up some trash, maybe taking down some of the, uh, broken benches, um, and I think that those projects are, um, either completed. Or, or are underway soon, um, I know that the intent of that area and that park is that it's going to be leveled eventually. But, um, until it is, I think we have just as much obligation to maintain it, um, and keep it a usable space. Because it is being used, um, as a mom with littles, any, you know, hard surface that isn't a street. Is a great place for bikes and scooters, and it is right next to, um, uh, a playground. So I would hate to see it not be maintained up until the day that it is, at least minimally, up until the day it is torn out. Um, today is the, uh, last day to register to vote, so I encourage everybody to, um, check the registration. Um, update that and make any changes that they need to, um, Steve, I will be there Saturday morning, so, um.
We have daycare for you.
I'll bring some donut eaters. Anything fenced in is ideal. And I think that, uh, covers, I know you have some big news to share.
Well, I don't know if it's big news, but it's, it's kind of, it's kind of exciting news, I guess, uh, first of all, I wanna start off is, um, I'm really excited about the, the progress we're making in Hutchinson. Everything we keep doing is just making leaps and bounds and making this community a better place to live, um, some of the things in my area that, um. The spyglass addition, we're working on getting water to that, uh, those people out in that community, um, so that's coming soon. And then the panorama traffic, um, I'm gonna have another meeting on Wednesday, July twenty-fourth, uh, from six to eight at Dylan Nature Center. Basically, the purpose is to outline the next steps in finding a remedy for the traffic issues on Panorama and Lakeview area. Um, and then on Orchard Park, um, we're gonna be adding three, um, speed bumps in the circle. And we're going to, um, considering adding two more, engineering is going to be looking into that to see exactly where we're gonna put those. And if we need to add those additional ones, um, and then on Forty-third and Halsted, we will be adding a, uh, four-way stop there. Uh, to make that intersection safer, um, we're gonna place electric message boards up there. Uh, so incoming drivers can see the change, uh, for the intersection, uh, what, one, for one week. And then we anticipate moving the boards to Halsted on Thursday, July eighteenth. And then the stop signs have been ordered for that, and are supposed to be installed around July twenty-fifth. Um, when the message board becomes available, we're gonna place that there, um, at, oh, I guess. When the message board comes available, it's basically going to be, we're changing those speed limits along Forty-third, um, from fifty-five to forty-five. I was talking to Mary Grace the other day, and she said, she was saying that, um, based of the county and the city, one direction you, you could do fifty-five, and the other direction you do forty-five. Which makes no sense, but that's how it's set up, so we're gonna get that, so it's all the same, all the way across there. So that'll, that'll be a great change to do that, so I'm kinda excited to get all those changes made, uh, to protect the safety of our community members. Um, let's see, and then, so I do wanna really thank Enrico and Mary Grace, they've really done a lot of work on the backside for all of these issues. Um, they're very proactive in getting these things done and addressed, talking to the community members, um, I just wanna thank them for all of their hard work on that. Um, then coming to Click Fix, um, so it's really working well. The one thing is the last tab, there's a tab, when you get an email back, that the tab does not work. So I don't know what that is, where you can reply back to the, say they've mowed your ditches or whatever they've done, that you can reply back to it, that tab does not work. So I think we need to look at that getting, um, possibly fixed, and then Thirty and Sixty-one Highway, I don't know if that's a, that stoplight is really quick. Like, you can get about two cars through there and it changes, so, um, I don't know if we could, I don't know if that's a K dot issue, where we can maybe see about extending that just a little bit longer. It's the one that runs, uh, down Thirty, cause you see a lot of people trying, like, you know, they know it's gonna change, so they try and hurry to get through it, sometimes they're going through on a red light or yellow. And so I don't know if that's something we can address too, um, and then I think that's all I have.
We did talk about Seventeenth and K sixty-one, extending the yellow or whatever, I, I hope that city staff has done that. And I agree with you, I've been kept, kept in the loop on what's going on in the southeast district of Hutchinson. And I am very thankful and impressed that we are moving forward, so that people can see that we are listening. And doing things to help the safety of our citizens, I, I appreciate you taking the lead and taking that seriously, I have a.
Can I say one thing?
Yes.
To piggyback off of this, cause you're right there, Chief Burley, um, with the new stop sign, um, school bus, that'll be new for the school buses, for their first day of school. Um, so I would just ask, you know, it's probably already on your radar for some extra enforcement along there, as the school buses are making that stop for the first time. Um, that people don't whip right around them, um, that hopefully someone gets a big fat ticket for that and makes, makes an example of them, so. Um, with that, sorry, I just wanted to point that out.
Very good, um.
Mayor, can I say one thing before you get started? On your issue, I used to be sent in the, the senior traffic signal technician, it's called passage times, it depends on the space of the cars. If you got a car up here on your way back here, the light's gonna change, you have to be in the, the sequence, and it counts all the cars. If you have any space in the cars at all, she's gonna trip, so a lot of people coming down the street, see, I'm gonna got a yellow light, they see the light, but if they don't get in that gap. It's gonna change.
Is that how Thirty and Sixty-one are set up then?
Yes, sir.
Is there any way to modify that to?
Can you shrink the?
Yes.
The distance or length?
You can shrink, it's all done by the program in the computer, but you risk, uh, uh, it's done for a reason. They, uh, we have a passage time, and you shorten the passage times, you're gonna have a lot of people saying, oh, I can get there faster now, you know, people running the red light. There's a reason why they keep the passage times. You know, people running the red light. There's a reason why they keep the passage times longer. So whenever that car, you got to keep the group of cars together. When you have a group of cars that are together, then the light will hold. But when you get spread apart, it's called that gap there that controller says, oh, there's nobody there, so we're going to go ahead and go to yellow.
I understand. It's just one of those things that kind of concerns me is, you know, you got that high-speed traffic coming from north and south and then you'll see people just like, that thing hits yellow really fast, they're like, oh, I can make it. And then you get another one that just falls right behind you.
It's called gap out.
Yeah.
When you gap out, then the light will change quick. A lot of people don't understand that. So the biggest thing is keep, it's called platoons. When you have cars going together, it's called platoon. You want to keep those platoons together. If you're a driver out there, don't be riding on the guy's bumper, but get closer to him within two, three foot and you're in the platoon and the light will hold for you.
Gotcha.
Okay?
I'm sorry, sir, go ahead.
Oh, that's okay. Well, normally you guys cover everything I like to cover, but I've got a whole list of things. So I did have an Elmdale visit, spoke to a group of fifty to sixty seniors there at lunch the other day. I'm very excited that we're going to look at some programs to help those on a fixed income, maybe help hold the line, help them, you know, be able to suffer with this inflation that we're all suffering with. I think that's a good thing they're also concerned with. Us, our enforcement of their branches and whatnot, I told them that we will enforce that, but I don't think that's going to be our top priority. So, you know, to your point, I believe you mentioned how, how do we clean up some of these properties to be determined. I spent a day with the State Fair Group and probably a hundred and fifty people talking about how we respond to a disaster. We had some mock disasters, one of which was a cyber attack. And what we're going to do, so we have plans behind the scenes on what happens in those situations. Save two or three of the things, the best for last. I don't know if people have noticed that the tracks are getting fixed, not just one set of tracks, but both set of tracks at C and D and Main. Thank you to the railroad for getting on that. We will do the asphalt work in short order. The tracks, at least at D, are done and installed and there's trains going through there, but we don't have the road work done yet. Good news, progress. Woody Seat, I still want to have a meeting with the folks in the southwest part of town when we figure out the final design plans and just, just keep, keep folks informed. Most important thing, I forgot a proclamation, it's my mother's birthday today, so happy birthday, Mom.
I have, I have a question.
About my mother's birthday?
Yes.
I'm not going to tell you how old she is.
So something that we talked about, I don't know, a couple of months ago was like, what if we had a wood chipper day? And this was long before the storm. I'm curious what the cost of the cleanup event was and the cost of, I know the land was nothing, but you know, what was our total labor cost for that and equipment cost? Because that was a pretty extended event and so I'm curious what the total came to. Because it seems like at this point, lots of cleanup has happened, but there's still a lot to be done. It's just a different type of cleanup at this point. I think people got the small stuff that was really manageable and could fit in private vehicles and whatever they had. But now it's like the major work is still.
I know that there were north of five hundred trips to the dump with city gigantic trucks.
Yeah. So if, if we know the cost, and I think maybe somewhere there was a post that said the number of pounds or trips. So I'm just curious. When C and D are done on Main, will we still need to have that rough track sign up on Main Street? Because if we're going to take it down, I feel like city council should go take it down.
All right. Thank you for your editorial comments.
Yeah.
Real quick, Mayor, I'd tell you guys a story about Mrs. Gossett.
Oh, no.
We was at a meeting, she had her baby with her child. How old is he? Five?
Uh, which one?
The one that walks.
He's, well, they both walk. They're two, almost two and almost five.
We're having a meeting there. Okay, everybody's having a meeting. Her child's running around. What's the child do? And pretty soon I look in that Zone, they have a Cajun basketball court, it's Cajun. And so I just happened to turn my head and the little child's in the Cajun area. That's where I meet my child. We have childcare there. And he's standing there looking at me, Mr. Garza, get me out of here. But it worked.
She put her kid in a cage.
Yes.
Enrico, what do you have for us? We've got to move this along.
I was out all of last week, but I have spent some time just getting caught up with staff on any, on anything that I've missed. But we have made a lot of progress on some other outstanding items. So that's really all I have for now.
Okay. Very good. And how this is going to work, we have an executive session that I promise will only be fifteen minutes. Please let us take care of that first for those of you that are here for the budget discussion. So could we maybe take a five-minute break and then resume at ten till eleven? Somebody make that motion?
I move, I motion to recess into executive session pursuant to the preliminary discussion to the acquisition of real property exception, KSA seven five dash four three one nine B six. In order to discuss the possible acquisition of real property, the open meeting to resume in city council chambers at, I forgot what you said.
Ten fifty.
Uh, ten fifty.
Ten fifty.
I'll second that.
Richardson?
Yes.
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 Yes.